That better? That's better. Uh, next up is approval of the agenda.
Hope to approve the agenda.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. Uh, do we have anybody signed in? So, no. Anybody online Blake? Okay, we will move on from that. And move to student rep reports. Yoshimi?
So for ASB, I have, um, I've started making the blackout volleyball bracket poster and I've started thinking about the color scheme for the class points posters since I'm the executive business manager and the class murals and class points poster will be made on Sunday in the commons at two from five thirty P M. Uh, band is gonna be marching in Leavenworth on Saturday, on Saturday in their annual autumn leaf parade. And for miscellaneous, I've had three student athletes ask me to, um, ask you guys if they could have the bottom door unlocked. Um, at least at the end of the school day, um, just cuz they've been late to practice, like both of them have been late to practice at least twice. Um, going up and down that hill and like going all the way around to the locker room and stuff like that. And then if any of you want any just breakfast tickets, I have them. I take exact change cuz I don't have any change. Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Yoshimi? Thanks Yoshimi. Kami?
Soccer won their first conference game yesterday against Toffenich. Volleyball plays Efrae tomorrow. Cross-country travels to Leavenworth on Saturday. There's a home swim meet on Saturday. And football travels to Grandview on Friday. And homecoming week is next week in the kickoff. On Monday, we have blackout volleyball. And then on Wednesday, we have powder puff.
Questions for Kami? Thanks Kami. Alexander?
I have one, uh, new submission to the form I have and it's, uh, just a simple request to have the lower parking lot repainted. So that the parking spaces are more visible.
Thank you, Alexander. Any questions for Alexander? I appreciate it. Moving on to school building reports. Mister Denny, you're up first.
Thanks for having me. Um, got a few things on here. I'll just go through. I'm sorry. A little closer. I didn't think anybody would hear my voice that much. So here we go. Um, school year's off to a great start. And a lot of the work actually to get this year going well started last year. Started at the end of the last year. Um, we, uh, needed to make sure that our tier one instruction that is all students receive, um, was as strong as possible. So we, um, went back and developed blocks for reading and math. Uh, the result of that is a complete revamp of the master schedule. And I can't thank Crystal and Amanda and Jamie for the work they did to get that done. Um, they've touched every class, changed every section, every class uh, that we had, um, to fit into the new master schedule. Um, the result of that is we're able to complete, um, the curriculum in the time allowed a little bit better within the reading and math, um, blocks. So that's helpful. In addition, they're able to receive, um, direct, um, targeted intervention enrichment. Um, and so that used to be, um, a class that we would send a small group of kids to. And we weren't able to provide that. Now we're able to provide that on an ongoing basis, um, day after day in the general education, uh, class. So that's been a great, um, change. There's a lot of growing pains with that, but, um, it's, it's working pretty well so far and we're hoping that the we're certain that the data is gonna show that as we get through the year. That also allows teachers to P L C twice a week, um, where they're able to look at, um, uh, standards. They're able to look at, um, common assessments. They're able to look at the results of the assessments, the student data. Um, they're able to, um, engage as research partners and, um, take a look at instructional practices and improve student outcomes. Um, we didn't have that built into the schedule and now we do. So, um, another benefit of that work that, um, Crystal and the, and the counselors did, um, earlier in the summer. On to other ideas. The fall sports are up and running. Um, we've got boys soccer, volleyball, cross-country and football in full swing. Um, we had a whole host of home events this week. Uh, last week, Patrick Humberstadt hosted, um, uh, cross-country meet. Over a hundred and fifty students were there from multiple schools. Um, it was a beautiful day. Um, it was a well-attended event and, uh, that's the only one we host, um, because there's only one of those a week. So, uh, Mister Humberstadt was able to get his, uh, scheduled in and early and it was a great event. Um, today we had volleyball and soccer at home. Tomorrow will be football. So there's usually a, a home, other than football where they play one game a week. There's usually a home game every week. So there's an opportunity for people to come by and watch the great things that our student athletes are doing on the field as, um, as well as in the classroom. So, um, uh, homecoming's coming up pretty soon at the high school. So, um, with, uh, Mrs. Keane reached out to us and shared the information that the high school is gonna use and our students engage in that. So we've got kind of a parallel spirit week going on at, um, Howells Middle School. We did give our students some voice and so we've changed a few of the dress-up days and that kinda stuff. Um, but it's pretty, pretty close to what the high school has already got going on. So we're looking forward to that. That's gonna be exciting. We have a, um, kind of a end of September, um, uh, rewards assembly for this Friday. So that'll be fun. Um, parent conferences, we just opened that up online. Um, parent conferences for the middle school will be late night on the, um, I believe it's the eighth. Um, a full day on the ninth and then a half day on the tenth of October. So we're looking forward to, um, uh, meeting with parents and guardians and talking about the great things that students are doing in class. Um, one of the cool things, and I was hoping to have pictures for you tonight, but you'll just have to check out our social media, um, in the next day or so. We just completed our fall camp Dudley experience. Um, we were able to send, um, all of our sixth grade. We had to use it on two days cuz they couldn't accommodate us all in one day. So Crystal and, um, several teachers took half of the class on Wednesday and, um, I was able to go up on Friday with, um, the rest of the teachers and the rest of the students. About a two-hour drive, um, to Clear Lake up by Rimrock. And, um, the kids were, uh, able to participate in six different classes. Um, low ropes, archery, biodiversity, canoeing, watershed, nature hike. Um, and so they also received, uh, lunch and a full family-style lunch and dinner. Um, and it was a great experience for our kids that we haven't had before. Most kids have, in the past, have gone to Camp Luton and did that at the end of their sixth grade along with Seattle and some other stuff. It was, um, great to get that in the beginning of our year to build and, um, kinda create some of those relationships with our students, either between student, student and staff to students. Um, that we wouldn't have otherwise had that opportunity. So, um, it was really cool, um, to be able to see kids outside of the classroom jumping around up and down on the ropes course, um, going on great climbs, learning about, um, nature and our role in the, in the environment. And they learned to be work, or to work as a team and be leaders. And so it was amazing. Um, we do have another half of that that we'll be doing in the spring. Um, right now it is scheduled cuz we got on to the, we're one of the newbies in the camp. So we got on to the calendar for the, um, first week after spring break. It's gonna be a little cold, so we're hoping that there's some cancellations later on. But, um, even if we get up there and it's chilly, I don't have any doubt that it's gonna be an amazing opportunity for our kids to engage in some more outdoor, um, learning opportunities. And just wanna say how thankful I am for the, the students, the staff, the families and everybody that have pitched in to make the start of twenty-four, twenty-five such a, a great start for us.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you.
I was wondering, I don't know if you know this, someone will know it. Camp Dudley, did we get state funding for that?
Yes, we did.
Very cool.
Yes, we did.
Great. Thank you. Alright, next up is Mister Paulette, C T E department.
You have a green dot. You have a green dot?
No. That was already on. I'm gonna start off by talking about the value of being a C T E concentrator. And what a C T E concentrator is, is a student who has completed two credits in a single program in their four years with their graduating cohort. In two thousand twenty-three, Prosser had a hundred and forty-one, hundred and forty-one concentrators. The four-year graduation, four-year graduation rate for P H S that year was ninety-one point three percent. For a concentrator, it was ninety-eight point five eight percent. Our concentrators exceed the state target in the categories of four-year graduation rate. Obtaining post-secondary credit, ninety-nine point three percent of the concentrators did this. And earning an industry-recognized credential, thirty-eight percent of our concentrators did that. Uh, both of those beat the state, the state targets for the whole, whole state. Um, we're continued to partner with Wallawak Community College with our STEM courses. They've been really good for, uh, articulating computer science. And we have the same curriculum that they're using in a couple of different classes. So we're gonna talk with, I, I reached out to them and see, to see if we could start doing college in the high school versus C T E dual credit. Since we're using the curriculum that Jerry suggested, we're teaching the same thing he does. I'm pretty confident that we'll get his approval. And then we're gonna also look at, uh, adding a couple more courses and keep offering up computer, college in the high school. Because it is an articulated credit that counts as the same class. And so that's what the value of it is in, and for the students. Ryan Wood had a little bit of freak out this year from the students. Right? What? I'm in a college class? I'm in a college class? It's like, we didn't change anything. Our class matched what they're doing. He goes, all we did was change our drafting software, nothing else. And some parents are like, I don't know. It's college class. I don't, my kid's not ready for college. And Ryan's like, you gotta do something different. They're all freaking out. They want out. He goes, we've changed nothing. So he talked, he talked him down, got him settled down. So that's good. Um, my celebration is, actually, our group's here. Prosser FFA once again won the horticulture play, that display. Second year in a row, I think. And we talked with Rick Adams. Seventies, maybe? Eighties? That any school has done that. Any questions?
Congratulations. Is that them in the background?
Uh, some of them.
Okay. Well, congratulations. Any questions for Rick?
I, oh.
Go ahead.
I just wanted everybody to know, I went to the tri-tech meeting with Rick today. Um, that's the superintendent council. We meet periodically. And, um, Rick is a real leader in his field and his expertise and the things that he brings to our program. Um, we are very blessed. He is respected amongst his peers.
Well, thank you.
This, this might be kinda off the wall here, but I had a coworker that I believe was at the state fair and sent me a picture of, I believe it was Natchez FFA that had built, um, orchard ladder, ladder trailers and were selling them. Is there, do you guys have time or is that something that you potentially could do through your program?
That would be something Mister Hayder could look into.
Okay.
Awesome. Great job.
Yeah, I too just wanted to say, I think you're doing a really great job with the program. I know we talked on the phone at the beginning of the school year about some programs in the middle school. I can't see what they have there. And we said, oh, all you have is robotics. You know, what else can we bring? And I wanted to tell you, so I said, my son is not crazy about this rotation. He's gonna take foods. Well, he's, you are not kidding. He loves that class. So I mean, what a great recommendation. You're right. The, the boys love the food.
Yes, yes, they do.
So anyway, I think you're doing great work and I'm, I'm excited to hear how the new robotics curriculum affects the middle school.
I was in there the other day. It's, it's, it's going well and it matches what we're doing at the high school.
Great work.
Thank you.
The, any other questions? Thank you, Ray. Okay, moving on to discussion item three, superintendent annual goals, objectives and review.
So I put version two in the, um, board packet this time. I do have to tell you. From an old business teacher and somebody did it, I added the fourth goal, but it still says three goals on the second paragraph. So I did catch that tonight when I was reviewing it. Um, I heard, listened well when we spoke last, at the last meeting. And, um, I did add the fourth goal that says make gains to a long-term capital planning and management of ever-changing, with ever-changing fiscal demands. So our goal was to not only add that long plan, but figure out how we're gonna manage it. And, and I added the words ever-changing fiscal demand because between the legislature, between our enrollment, it just seems like, you know, you just have, it's not like you know what your salary is for the next ten years. And so it's ever-changing. And so our goal is to try and put something together. So, and if you look on the last page then where that goal was, um, some art evidence for evaluation, those last, um, seven bullets, um, I think we can use, um, Ed Champagne happens to be here tonight, but, uh, our first step will be the, the capital assessment that went on and then moving forward is with all the things that you requested. And I think it'll be fun to share with you. Uh, I hope it will be fun to share with you in June, the evidence for those goals. If you see anything other than the typo of three goals to four goals, I'd like to present to you that next time for acceptance.
Any questions for Kim? Great, thank you. Alright, moving on to action item. Number one, out-of-state travel for Prosser FFA students to the National FFA Convention in Indianapolis, Indiana. Is there anybody here to speak on that one? Mister Hayder? Think so. Is it green? One more time.
Alright, so, um, last spring at the state FFA convention, we had one student, uh, Salma Mendoza, who's with us tonight. Um, she competed in the Spanish Creed contest um, at the state convention. That is something the Washington FFA has recently started. Um, but it's also the first year at the national convention that Nationals has started that contest. Um, and because Washington FFA, um, had that contest at our state convention and Salma finished second, she was the, one of the top two speakers. She qualified to compete at the national, uh, convention in October. Uh, the last week, full week of October is when the convention is in Indiana. Um, we have three other students that would like to go with her, so she's not going by herself. Um, two chapter officers, um, and then another student as well. Um, myself and Ms. Graff, one of our other ag teachers would be the, the two chaperones for the trip. Any questions?
No, I, I do think, you know, when we see, we, we see multiples of these and I think it goes to the testament of you and everybody else that's involved with the FFA of how well you guys have performed. At least since my times here. So it's, it's, it's fun to approve these in, in the fact that you are successful and your, and your kids were successful. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. It's really cool to see these come up so frequently. So I'd like to move to approve the out-of-state travel for Prosser FFA students to the National FFA Convention in Indianapolis.
It's been moved and seconded to approve out-of-state travel, uh, for the Prosser FFA students. Yoshimi, Kami? We got your thumb up already. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. Congratulations and good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next up is Old Tennis Courts, Wenaha Group Architects West.
So Ed, why don't you come on up to the hot seat? Um, I have, um, asked Ed to come this evening. Uh, Blake, do we have anyone from Wenaha? Jake, Keith, anyone on? Okay. Okay. If you are on and we don't see you, please feel free to speak up. Uh, what we have presented, um, to you is a proposed contract for the redo of the old tennis courts. In that, in, when you take a look at it, the one column is the three courts as they are. And then the far column shows, and if you go to the bottom of the, uh, the document, it shows the added costs of the, um, ten, the pickleball courts. And one of the things we heard loud and clear from our capital levy committee and our levy committee, when we went and went to the capital levy to our voters was like, what are you gonna do with the old tennis courts? How are you gonna help support us? And, um, for that thirty, approximately thirty thousand dollar difference, thirty-four thousand one hundred and sixty-eight plus tax. Um, the plan shows, and it's hard for me to envision because the last time I played football, I was in Mister Day's high school P E class. So I won't tell you how many years ago that was. But, um, there's the two tennis courts would sit like this and then it would be four pickleball courts. The advantage of this is those would have permanent nets in them. Um, not then our pickleball players would either not be playing at tennis court, tennis net height and would not have different lines. So it's really up to the, the board, um, about what we think is best. And, and Ed is here to help explain that. If there's any more things that you would like to add, the majority of the cost is fixed in the end.
I'm not here to answer any. This message is, um, I've taken those several times over six months since the some of the projects have been, have been going on. Um, we need to have the the, you know, some of the servicing, some subcontractor, come and take a look at what's and please get some additional, you know, go there and really look at what's there right now. It's, 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 uh, so, so, you know, we have to start expressing, taking it out and that sort of thing. So we, we must, guys, and you're gonna be responsible for, for guaranteeing that. And assessing, assessing, you can't decide that, that overall, it's not too bad, but we do need to come in and grind some stuff down and lay some other stuff over it before they put, uh, the coating, the, the finish, the top.
I just, the only other piece that I wanted to add is that I think this is, um, staying true to our community and our levy community, our our Prosser community and their voting of the levy. I think this would stay true to what we shared.
There was a, there was a picture in the board packet of the layout of this. Surface material.
I feel that, and that's basically.
I guess that's something common to say, what did we hear? Ball on court or ball in play or something like that? That's a kinda like four in golf. It's a terminology that they use. So it does include that short fence between, but our main perimeter fence stays the same. And if you look, there's a concrete footing that, that perimeter fence is sitting, that is not being touched. The entrance gate will stay.
And it'll be unlocked.
Yep.
Twenty-four seven.
I know you mentioned previously how that old tennis court will be used versus the new one for students. Could refresh my memory?
Sure. It's a, it's a twenty-four seven community school function, much like our, let's just say our track. Indirectly, right? It's our students first, so if high school PE comes down and plays tennis and pickleball and there's whatever, our community would need to understand that during school hours for PE or whatever, students have first access to that. But we wouldn't close it at five o'clock on Friday, but it'd be open all the time. It would have student access first. That doesn't mean on Saturday of six kids going to play on a Saturday afternoon that they get to kick the adults off or their, well, we're just talking about during school hours or school activities. Or maybe, I don't know, I'm looking at my ASB team over there, maybe they start a pickleball club, right? And so those types of functions would have for our community. But I think there's no one in our community that wouldn't want the students to come first.
Yeah, I think it goes, it goes a long ways with the community too, that having the pickleball courts. That seems like it's, it would be a lot more usable, more, you know, make it more attractive for, for more people.
And I think, I don't, I mean, one hears specifically from the high school, but there was the talk, I've received emails from the P K teachers and so forth, um, playing pickleball, learning some new rules and some different things. Somebody said, well, we'd have to go down there. I said, well, I think you still walk up to go to the track and the other things of the field, right? So it's just walking the opposite direction, but yes, it would be available.
I would make a motion to approve the old tennis courts with the improvements. I'll state it.
I'll second. It's been moved and seconded. Thumbs up. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Ed. Uh, next up is the Traveling Lantern Company at Witstrand Elementary. Let's see, is Kevin online or?
I'm here.
There you are.
Uh, so that we have the Traveling Lantern comes, uh, every year to do a performance. Um, it'll be in the spring.
Any questions for Kevin? I move to approve the Traveling Lantern Company at elementary. Been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Uh, next up is the consultant service agreement with the Ramble and Associates.
Eric, are you on? Okay. So I just wanted to, I wanted to give him the opportunity. I didn't want to speak on his behalf. Um, when we brought this before, there was not the language in the contract for ending the contract, and that has been added. Um, if you, it's, I believe in, uh, termination clause is there. Um, and I welcome any other questions, but we did write a clause in it that I feel is appropriate for this type of contract.
I think I noticed a few other changes as well, so did it?
I did not have a red line, so I don't know all of the changes. I know I just paid attention to that. Could you share with me what else you noticed?
Well, the, I mean, the one thing that stuck out to me was, I think it's cost for services will be negotiated on an annual basis during the proposed three-year contract period. I didn't recall that from the last meeting. I can certainly pull up the other agenda. I just wasn't sure if we kind of talked about having our legal advisor look at it, and so I wasn't sure if that was a recommendation.
No, we know that didn't come up for that. We had to just make sure the termination clause made sense. I didn't even ask it to.
Stuck out to me, I think, because I thought we had been looking at that price for three years.
It was ten thousand a year.
Previous.
Yes. I just don't know if it said. Yeah, it, it, you're correct. It was, is different. The previous contract read, the total contract fee is ten thousand per year for three years equals thirty thousand dollars, which includes all services outlined in the scope of work and deliverables. So it is.
So I guess I'm wondering, is this now a one-year contract?
Don't we know the cost of the first year? I'm gonna be very honest, because I only had this clause reviewed, I'm gonna have to look just for a moment. The project timeline still reads three years.
Looks like the fee structure is the same. Ten thousand for each contract year.
That's why that bullet's kind of drew me for a loop, confused how that read. Not that it's concerning if we have a termination clause, right? But I didn't know if there were other elements that were different.
Like I said, being a transparent, I did not review it word for word and did not look through redlining comparisons like we do. I do think we are protected on the clause, and I do think we're protected at the ten thousand per year.
Well, I wanna thank, uh, Raul and Eric for getting, updating this and adding this language. So I'll move to approve the consultant service agreement with the Ramble and Associates. It's been moved and seconded. Shamy, Cammy, Alexander. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to the special programs I E P writer. Nikki.
I believe the next four on there are mine.
Sure.
Uh, yes.
I think you're correct.
So, um, I E P writer, uh, is the same I E P writer I contracted with last year.
Is your green button on?
Are you, is your green light on? And then just pull it, put it, turn it to green, just pull it closer to you.
Okay. Okay. Um.
We're all learning.
Okay, sorry. Um, anyway, uh, when we had a staff member pass away last year, we had the need for an I E P writer. This year we have a, uh, one-year medical coverage at one school for a certified teacher, but she does not have a special ed endorsement, so I have to have a I E P writer for that position. And then we have another staff member out of maternity leave, so there's this, uh, I E P writer for that position as well.
Sorry, is this one? It was two people then, or it's just one I E P writer for both people?
One I E P writer that, yep. Yeah, yeah, sorry.
Questions for?
I was kind of wondering. I don't know a whole lot about this process, so writing I E Ps. The way I envision it, the, the teacher typically does that, right? They have that.
Special ed teacher does that as, as.
So then Kendra, is, does she just solely do I E P writing? Like is?
She contracts with Kenneth Wickin with us. She has to write I E Ps. She's a special ed teacher that, um, opted to do, to stay home and do this instead of go back.
And so it's not, it's not something that we typically would do to have like, uh, another crosser special ed teacher kind of covered for writing I E Ps for, about her.
Well, oh, absolutely, we can. Um, for instance, we, we have had, um, we have one teacher that has, um, stepped up and asked if so, like, uh, like November, for example, is a heavy month, so she volunteered to do um, one or two of them if needed, so that, that's an option on standby if she can get through the entire case load.
You're gonna, um, take a look at the volume then, and that's what you're trying? How you get the job done?
Yes, yes. Don't wanna burn anybody out.
Yes. For explaining that.
No problem.
Questions?
I would make a motion to, uh, approve the special programs I E P writer.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to, um, approve the special programs I E P writer. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. That's one down. Uh, next up is the Winston Center Agreement.
So, um, we have a, a student that was on an I E P. Uh, we did an evaluation. Parents have the legal right to ask for an I E, I E. I E, sorry, which is an independent evaluation, and so that's what, uh, the Winston Center was, was the, um, I, I E that she had requested, and she also requested the place, and so. That's that. Did that make sense? So we had an evaluation.
Yes.
We had an evaluation meeting. The parent did not agree with what we found.
Okay.
So she had the legal right to request it.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, my only question, is this a, an annual? I'm just looking at the Winston.
Oh, no.
Or is it monthly or?
No, that was, so they did.
The one time?
Yeah, they went and did that evaluation, went and had that evaluation done there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I see. We are financially responsible for that.
Does probably no, but I'm gonna ask it anyway. Does, does the state give the district funding for these sorts of things?
Nikki can explain that to you, um, but it's called, it's called Safety Net. Um, we can apply for it. Um, sometimes it's not dollar for dollar, sometimes it's percentage. Um, but
It doesn't cover this.
It doesn't necessarily cover things like this. Um, think about it, um, oh, think about, almost like a college education forgiveness loan, and that's kind of a backcourt subject probably with political terms, but I'll give you an example of that. Um, it costs us X number of dollars to manage and take care of our special education students. Our apportionment dollars are Y. The difference is our responsibility, and then we can ask the state to help support some of that difference. Um, and that is then divided, per se, the pot of money is divided by those who ask for it throughout the state, and there's a formulaic way in which they give you a percentage of that. It's called Safety Net. It's a net to help cover the costs that are unperscribed.
Do we ask for that typically?
Every year, we ask for way more than we get, but we, we're happy to get whatever we got. Last year we got sixteen? Uh, was that? Well, yeah.
Yeah. We applied last year, but you get what it does.
Yes.
Gotta love those things you're legally required to pay for, but the dollars don't always fund.
Mandated and funded.
I'll make a motion to approve the Winston.
I'd second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Yoshimi, Cammy, Alexander. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Next up is, uh, Thin Line Consulting.
Thin Line Consulting is, um, a fee that we have for a finding and arguing process from last year.
Question. I move to approve the Thin Line Consulting Agreement. Then moved and seconded, Yoshimi, Cammy. All thumbs up. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Next up is behavior support for special education students.
This, so you know what I'm talking about when I discuss this again. So the, um, proposal that you folks have, um, is not accurate. What happened with this situation is we were, I was trying to contract with an A B A specialist to come and support some, um, pretty severe behavior needs at, um, three of the elementary schools. And, um, she had to cancel a couple, twice with us, and the day that she was able to finally meet with me, Kim and Deanna, uh, happened to be the last day to get it on the board agenda, so told her, you have thirty minutes to get a contract if you want it to go before the board. She did not have a contract, Googled the contract, that is what you guys were presented with, so I did not look at her bottom line. I apologize. That is a big error on my behalf. Um, but what she was asked, so what we were asking ultimately was approximately three months of her services where she's fading out. Um, and so that's what this reflects. It reflects a hundred and seventy-five dollars an hour plus, um, mile age, and it's uh, hundred and three miles round trip daily, four days a week, first two weeks, and then start the fading. And what fading means pulling back when it's appropriate. Um, she's also willing to do some staff training and parent training if people were interested in it down the line, but this is just to get uh, students, um, enough to self-regulate in the classroom where they can be productive in their classrooms and adjust to school setting. So this contract is for twenty-two thousand instead of two hundred thousand.
We answered almost every one of my questions.
Okay. Yes. So I want to share what I, um, shared with Nikki when we, um, this was brought to my attention by um, a community member who did some review and so forth. And I talked to a board member this afternoon, and, um, what I shared to both the contractor and to Nikki was I did not legally know the answer to this board meeting tonight. Did not know if we can change the contract in the meeting, or if we had to table and re-present. So I want you to honestly know that I honestly do not know the Roberts Rules of Order on that. And so, um, we are under, the understanding it may not, it may have to be tabled and then brought back, but I don't know if anybody I tried to find an answer before the meeting started and I could not find the answer. Um, so I don't know what the guidelines are on that.
So you're saying that this contract that's in the agenda packet is not actually not, this is, this is basically?
The one she handed you tonight, yes.
Same person.
Same person, same thing.
Same services.
But I just don't, I just don't know the Roberts Rules of Order on changing a contract that's not in what was presented to the public. I think we would be.
I
Could this be though an amended version, and then we approve an amended, the amended version this meeting? Or does it? Does it actually need to be published first?
I would lean towards the published first.
I, I would tend to agree.
Just to play it on the safe side. Um, especially with a contract. I think you could probably do something with other items that maybe aren't contractual. Um, so I would, I would move to table this to our next regular meeting. Uh, will that extend the start date and end date? Will that just move the dates to next week? Or two weeks?
I think I'll need to postpone her starting. She was supposed to start Monday, so she'll just need to start after the next board meeting.
Okay.
I would second it. Do you make a motion?
I, I think I do.
Okay.
Did I make the motion? Selena, did I make a motion? Well, I'll make a motion to table until the next meeting.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nikki.
So just for clarification for those listening and for our records, we've tabled this contract. Services will not begin till after the meeting, and we will present the amended contract at that time.
At the next regular board.
Yeah, at the next regular board.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to table this to the next regular board meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Uh, next up is a notice of rescheduled board meetings. Is that an action item?
We felt it should be, just because there's special meetings and we canceled the two, and we just wanted it, it was a discussion item, and we thought we needed to bring it back.
Well, I move to approve the notice of reschedule board meetings. Probably didn't count.
I'd second it.
It's been moved and seconded to reschedule the board meetings that fall on Thanksgiving and Christmas. Yoshimi, what do you think? Cammy, are you, what's that? Oh. Not a problem. Nobody wants to be here the day before Christmas. Or the day of Christmas, actually. Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Uh, next up is um, item ten, it's the E E S Survey of Climate and Culture Contract with the Center for Educational Effectiveness.
Well, Deanna's on vacation, um, and so she wrote this, and then I will share what's been going on. Center for Educational Effectiveness is part of one of my goals and part of Deanna's goals, and it's a climate and culture survey. Crossers have done them in the past. The survey takes between ten and fifteen minutes. We will have students from the grades four through twelve, as well as our parents, community can take it, the board and our staff. Um, this is a well-known reputable organization throughout the state, and they do things throughout many states. Um, and it's a great way, it's anonymous. I do want everyone to understand it's anonymous. Now, it does know your, C E E knows your email address. Because if you say, well, I had a problem when I did whatever, we put you in contact with them. They can look it up on the backend, say, no, we never got it, yes, we did, whatever, but the district, our results, everything are totally anonymous. Um, there are, sometimes if it might be an identifying factor in the respect if there's only one of someone or something in a department, but there's far as no names or anything like that. Um, students and everybody self-selects, like a teacher would self-select what grade they're in, what building they're in. A student would self-select their grade and so forth. A student would self-select their grade and so forth. And we're really super excited about this. It's a good pulse of how things are going. It knows, we do some work, I think Mr. Denny's here, some of his work with is school improvement, right? We'll use some of these culture pieces. They're part of our school strategic plan, our school improvement plans. We need to keep an eye on how things are going. And if, with your okay, it would happen, it starts on October seventh, which is the week of conferences. The board members get a survey, the teachers get a survey, and then there's a QR code for families. They can do them while they're waiting their turn for their conference or things like that. There are paper surveys. It does come in English and Spanish. And any other language that we may need, if we have a unique situation and someone needs this unique language.
How would we make sure all students take this survey?
Well, in most situations, you would do them, for example, in your Mustang period. But there's, yeah, so you would just, you would have a QR code for that whole week and you can just use that QR code and take it.
I'm just letting you know, there's some Rainstar kids, oh, I did not touch anything. Okay, I don't know. There's some Rainstar kids that just don't care about the high school.
So, consequently, we can't force someone to take it. The goal would be that we would put it out in Mustang period. We would send out an email to students, right? Hoping that they would take it, but there is no grade attached. There's no force to be done. It's nothing like that. Some buildings do like drawings, everybody, you know, puts their name in, but we also want it to be anonymous. So, we don't want to put your name in based on what you did because we want honest information. Oh, they do have some, somebody made the comment when we were doing our opener about it. The reason they also collect the email that it came from, or actually, it's the IP address that it come from. So that if you have fifty surveys from the same IP address that is land blasting something, those are called outliers and they remove those outliers out of the surveys.
Yeah, no, I was just thinking like if it asks for grade level, then would data be like depleted in one grade level because?
Possibly. Yeah, it's one of those natures of, natures of things that happen when you do a survey. The hope is that people take it seriously and honestly because we don't sometimes know how to make things better if we don't know what the actual heart of the people are.
I'm a huge advocate of getting information about our culture and how things are going. I think this is a really, really great idea. Maybe we did it three years ago. I don't know. I don't remember ever being asked about our schools personally. I, I think it's great and it's going to give us a lot of good information to inform what our next steps should be and where we can improve. And I love that this includes that follow-on service to then coach and provide support in helping implement the improvements that are identified in the survey. Because that piece to me is often just left undone, right? You collect all this information, you get feedback, and then it doesn't go anywhere. So, I love that this contract includes that follow-up.
And that was really important to us as well, is we have office, OSSI coaches in some of our buildings, but not in every building. So, this is making sure that all buildings get the same services and same support.
And that, to clarify, this is just for our information.
Yes.
Yep.
I have a, I guess I have a que, you know, and I can't remember doing this three years ago. Kind of like, yeah, I just, just don't remember. But is there, is there another district that did one maybe last year that we could review and?
I would.
Tennessee, the outcome, I don't, I guess we could get on the website, but.
I, I've done CE many a minute ago, but I've done CEE in Granville when I was there. CEE is originally started through the University of Washington programs and so forth.
Gotcha.
Michael, do you have any history with CEE for Foster? As you know, this is part of my goals.
Right.
So, I think the communication and the data shareout, I hope will be to the same level that you expect from me moving forward.
Another question is the contract term started in July of twenty-four and ends in June.
It's just a school, it's a school year.
Okay.
No, we haven't signed anything, signed anything.
Okay.
It's just, it's considered a school year.
Gotcha.
That's why it's July to June. Yeah, we, I think Sean just started getting the list together today, just because of the fast turnaround, trying to have it ready first conference week the seventh.
Do they provide a list of the questions?
Yes, yes. And those are available to you.
Are they? Okay. On their website or?
Um, we have our own. I mean, they use, I hate to use the word generic, but they use a generic set for most of them. And then we had a test bank, or not test bank, question bank that we chose some from.
Gotcha.
And that's, I think, Dr. Weinman's asked me about how long it takes, between ten and fifteen minutes. Kind of depends also on, like your thought into.
So, where, where it says provide coaching and support services, is, I'm guessing, is that dependent on how your survey comes back?
Yes.
And that, is that, is the coaching and support services included in that?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
And I think as Director O'Brien said, that's one of the things that is really unique about this. You know, data is only as good as what you do with it once you get it. Kind of like our capital server, or Capital Projects work or any of that work. It's if we do something with it when we get it.
Yeah, I really like near the end of the contract, you can see some of the consulting they plan on doing. So, like native-driven decision-making. Huge fan of that. Strategic analysis, planning, communities of practice for climate and culture. That's customized building support. That means they're gonna customize that to, based on what went on in our facility. And maybe review and search action planning. So, I think those all to me look like different sessions they're gonna hold.
And they may be different by building or location or department.
I just always really am disappointed when I see a survey that, that there is no follow-through on. So, I love that this is the whole package. We're gonna, we're gonna get the pulse of the community and the students, parents and the teachers, probably the teachers and staff, right? I'm assuming everyone will be get and then actually take some action on the result. That's really important. I'd actually like to make a motion to approve the EES Survey of Climate and Culture Contract with the Center for Educational Effectiveness.
I'll second. So, it's been moved and seconded to approve the EES Survey of Climate and Culture Contract with the Center for Education Effectiveness. Yoshimi, Kami, Alexander. All those in favor signify by saying yes. Aye, I don't even know.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Alright, moving on to vouchers. Any questions on vouchers?
I was curious actually about the American Reading Company. That comes up, I think, every time. Do we pay every month on that or?
No, not, not necessarily every month, but curriculum orders are huge and they're delayed. And so, they're getting new things all the time.
So, we are then like kind of constantly refreshing books, that curriculum.
Correct.
I had in my mind that it was like a one-and-done type of thing.
Yeah, that would be nice. Some things, sometimes they are, but especially when you have novel sets and different things like that, right? Or I think, like think of our construction projects, right? We got everything but the last seven doorknobs. And now we got the bill for the last seven doorknobs, that kind of thing. So, I mean, I think until it's really completely in place and done. And then the next year, now we're missing twenty-seven books of five different novels. So then, and the, and the statement would still go to American Reading Company, even though it's not new curriculum.
Kim, can I talk a little bit about that?
Yes, definitely, please.
So, there's consumables that come with ARC and that will be a yearly purchase for those consumables to replace those. But there is a positive, is that we actually had to get some toolkits at higher levels because our kids grew so much that the range of books that we originally purchased were not extended far enough. So, we actually had to go and buy some extra toolkits this year.
Good problem to have. Thank you.
I have a question for Delise on the Apollo check nine oh nine eight nine four. You answered my question. Considering, and it's supposed to be moved, it should have been in Capital Projects?
Yes, that was a chiller work done at the middle school.
So, do we need to pull that check and put it into Capital?
Yeah, so she pulled the check and voided and then reissue that, that small piece at a general fund and then the big piece at a capital project. So, it'll affect our cash.
So, how do we do that with the motion for the, these vouchers to make sure that they're correct?
We have, we have done that before. We did it with the baseball reimbursement from uniforms for baseball coach. We also got the board policy that we can do vouchers and we have included with you the next time.
Gotcha.
So, we can do that and then we can include that single reissue.
In the next voucher, okay.
Yeah, it'll still get paid. Time of the year, yeah.
Okay. Any other question?
I'm getting back to something that, that Michelle had mentioned. On the, like, American Reading Company, I'm sure we could get a breakdown of that if if we were questioning something, we could get like a breakdown.
Yeah, so the invoices list every book, every title, how many, what they're ordering.
Okay.
Yep. Be more than happy to send that to you if you'd like.
It's just a lot of pages, so we don't send it unless it's up. You'd think the board packets are big now.
There are a few things in here that seem like they're curriculum-related, right? So, Lake Shore Learning Materials. Kendall Hunt Publishing, ninety books as well. Is that pretty typical for the beginning of the school year?
All the teachers are ordering new books, new supplies. All the buildings are restocking their libraries. So, you'll see, I mean, September is a big month for expenses anyways, as you can see by the vouchers, which is, which is very typical.
Any other question? Moved to approve vouchers as presented?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Yoshimi, Kami, Alexander. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. That concludes our action items. Moving on to consent items, one through three.
I'd make a mo, a motion to approve the consent items. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent items. Yoshimi, Kami, Alexander. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on. Well, that concludes all of our items for tonight. Moving on to reports. Delise, you're up first.
Okay, the first thing that I have is student enrollment for September. We're looking really great. I'm, as always, I'm cautiously optimistic, but we are seventy-seven students over budget.
And I'm cautiously optimistic that it's more in October. Now, just in all sincerity though, October is when we'll see our first tri-tech and running start changes, right? So, your headcount may go up and your FTE should flatten out a little bit too. So, I just want to be very transparent with that.
Great. Any questions for Delise? Thank you.
Thank you.
And since Deanna's on vacation, bypassed her.
I put my report on your table. I was, I was so organized tonight. I didn't have to pass it out at the last minute. I always tell you where and what I'm doing. The Climate Action Task Force for the City of Prosser, I did miss this week's meeting on Tuesday. That was my intent to go to the two-hour meeting and it just didn't happen. But they were gracious enough that I'm going to do a thirty-minute check-in with them and for that, it's just important that as a superintendent and a voice of the community, that I hear what's going on inside the community. Not just always in what's going on at the schools. There's some great things. We're still partnering really well with the community examples. The stage for the Harvest Festival will go downtown this weekend. So, if you go listen to music on that stage is, you know, a partnership. We take it down, set it up, so on and so forth. The Night Glow on Saturday night at the stadium, those kinds of things. Super excited about. Under Communication, it says, continue to support the PTO and their adventures and programs such as Science on Wheels. We're super excited on that. So, there's lots of things outside of what we call the traditional classroom learning going on. Mr. Denny shared about, you know, Camp Dudley, the things that PTO are doing. The, you know, all of the activities for our families and communities. It's really super exciting. We want to continue to support the Thrive Cafe. The bus stop is working, those kinds of things. So, that's awesome. And our Princess Theater relationship is ramping up. You'll see a contract at the next board meeting. But I thought I would let you know that the first production of Lion King with Whitson Elementary Third Grade will be in November. Whit's, excuse me, Heights is also doing Lion King with the third grade. And, oh shoot, Jesse's gonna be disappointed. I need to remember, it was really cute too. There's something with first grade. If I think about it, I'll share with you. The one legal issue we have going on, we're still.
This is Jesse. It's Jungle Book.
Oh, thanks. I knew it was really cute, Jesse. I just could not remember. Thank you.
Yep.
Jungle Book. I'm so excited that Kevin, all the people are listening out there, that they're really listening. That's super. So, the one legal issue, we're super excited. We're moving to mediation and we're hoping that we can continue to, to share, settle at facilities. I want to make real clear, we do have a smell at KRV. So, my farm girl's gonna kind of come out of me and I would say it with, first, we thought it was something that smells dead, for the lack of a better description. We have had our crew in the ceilings. And we had a, we sent our air duct plan to the duct cleaning people. They were waiting for an estimate back on that and a timeline when they can come. We also are reaching out to Fowler. Craig Gagley is coming to see me and we're going to talk about, we think it's air-related. What I mean by that, either an air gas release is then coming in. It seems to be cycling about the same time. I just want to be really clear about that. We met with Darlene Morrow and some of her staff today. We're gonna work, health department, make sure there's nothing we need to be concerned with in the kitchen and so forth. Just being transparent that we, when there's a problem, we try and hit it head-on and do our best. So, I don't really have anything else to tell other than we know what's going on and we want, it has had a couple employees who've had some headaches and some different things. In all seriousness, yet joking, I don't know if it's because of the stinky smell or so much sensey in the air trying to cover the stinky smell. Because if you've been around a lot of perfumes, sometimes you get the headache. Capital Levy Tennis Courts, I don't know if you drove by, that shop is in. And that's a big, big deal. If we can get some water down and get that ready to go. The post in, the chain link, the netting part of the fencing is going up soon. The oldest, old tennis courts were on the agenda tonight. Housel Middle School, Mr. Denny, we decided on demolition during conferences and installation during Thanksgiving because we're off for the week. So, it's, I think it's a really good piece. So, we're super excited. I think it worked out pretty well. Mr. Denny, right? We had enough voices in the meeting and we, they're called pre-construction meetings. I think it worked out pretty well, um, Mr. Denny, right, we had enough voices in the meeting and we, they're called pre-construction meetings. And we make sure everybody's being heard and things. Uh, Art Fiker, the concrete for the stairs um are going in, the rebar was approved, that inspection went through, so that was done. Um, the lighting uh was kind of a, I don't know, kind of a, I don't want to say sore subject, but it was like, why didn't we think about lighting better? Right? And then there's a light pole at the main ticket booth on the lower part. And um, we aren't gonna have to run any new wires, or the pedestal is in the right spot, we're just gonna change the pole and lighting head and some LED and. We, for a very, I don't, relatively, I guess, a small cost, we're gonna be able to solve that problem without having to do a bunch of wiring. So it was really good. Um, painting at the old PHS, we're getting quotes for the rest of the painting of the gym. Um, we kind of look like the dirty kid on the block right now, standing next to the beautiful Boys and Girls Club. So we're gonna do a little, finish our painting um on the sides of the building, we're gonna pressure wash the entire building. We are looking for a window, energy efficient grant for the building, so that's something we're working on. The four trees are going in this week, you should see them in by the end of the week. We did end up having to do one of the holes by hand, so you have three that were dug with a bucket and we have to dig one by hand. Nobody can really guarantee that what's in that area, so we're gonna have to dig that last hole by hand. Um, and then then repairing the sidewalks and getting the rest of the building taken up. Um, my yearly goals um are in and we're tightening them up. We started our meet, uh, monthly meet and confer meetings with the PSE and the PEA, those are always really good, our relationships are getting stronger than ever. I'm still continuing to my tri-tech meetings, my EST superintendent meetings. And I can't believe Delise didn't say anything about fiscal. So I walked into her office yesterday and she hands me this little piece of adding machine tape. She goes, look, so she's really excited about what she's gonna present for you for the final budget. But she gets to get the glory and things are looking good and we're super excited about that. So, I, I do say that we must, uh, we are blessed. Um, very much like some of our partners in neighboring districts are struggling, but we must remain frugal. We have to make good decisions moving forward and be good stewards of our communities, man.
Great, thank you, any questions for Kim?
Thank you.
Alright. Uh, moving on to board member reports, Michelle?
I have a few things. So last Friday, I attended the Wasda General Assembly and that's um basically just all the. Board, well, school boards around the state voting on what they would like Wasda to advocate for us for. So it was a much quicker meeting than I had put on my calendar, we wrapped it all up in one day. Um, it's amazing how fast the last quarter of the agenda went, when they said, we think we might be able to finish this today. And then all of a sudden, there was very little discussion. And we just started quickly moving through everything, but um, funding was definitely the theme of, of the meeting. So it was loud and clear that school boards and districts would like Wasda to advocate for ample funding. Um, especially when it comes to mandates, please provide the funding that we need to accomplish all those things. So that was really the theme through, through most of the items that were on the agenda. Um, Mr. Denny talked about Camp Dudley and I wanted to just thank Kim and Deanna for bringing Camp Dudley. Um, and other opportunities to our schools, I think it is so important to introduce those STEM opportunities to our kids. Um, my child had a really fun time, even though she was reluctant to go. She came back just all smiles, telling me how great it was, she couldn't wait to go back for the second day in the spring, so that was really positive. I also looked up a little bit about outdoor school on Camp Dudley's website and I wanted to share some research, research they had in a presentation. Um, because I think it's really cool to know, so they, first of all, they. They have a lot of research and links listed on their website if you want to dig further into that about outdoor school as a whole. But it's supposed to be particularly beneficial to districts such as ours, where we have a lot of underserved. You know, minority population and low income, so. Evidence has shown that students who participate in outdoor school have stronger relationships with their peers. Demonstrate stronger leadership and collaboration skills, they engage more in school and their communities. They receive fewer behavior referrals in school, graduate at higher rates than students in non-participating schools. That have the same socioeconomic demographics and they perform better on student investment than students in non-participating schools. So I think that's real positive. And again, my student had a great time, but I'm just so thankful that we were able to provide that opportunity. I wrote a whole bunch of other stuff down about Camp Dudley that I won't go on because it's already the end of the meeting. Um, another plug for the Thrive Cafe, so I popped in there, I love their having these weekly activities every Thursday. I think tomorrow is like fidget, build, build your own fidget. Um, I popped in last Thursday while they were making slime and it was packed, I mean, kids love slime, I guess. It was packed, so it was really great to see that as a resource for our kids. I think they're open Monday through Thursday at this point, three to six, and I know that they're still looking for volunteers to help out. Um, and then lastly, I really just wanted to think and commend Prosser Police Department, our district, Crystal and Mr. Denny. Um, for this threat that we had at HMS this week. So I think that um, while it, while it would have been really easy for the district to, to look on the news and say. This sort of thing is happening nationwide, it's probably, there's probably no need to it. I really appreciate that we took this seriously and took the stand that, that we had to deal with it, right? Because there's too much at stake to not take it seriously. And I really commend the partnership, it was less than three days from the time that the threat was made until it was resolved. So I, I just think you all deserve kudos for your partnership and your hard work and keep caring. That's it for me.
Thanks, Michelle, right?
We got a little bit, but not a lot, but that was good.
Okay, bye.
Yeah, I, I will um piggyback on Michelle said, uh, Kim and staff and local PD. Um, hopefully the rest of your week's a little easier on you guys, but appreciate you guys' work this past week. Um, caught first half of the soccer game on Saturday, um, which is good, great weather. Um, I also want to pass on our Fellowship of Christian Athletes. Uh, club that meets at the high school on Mondays at lunch and Mrs. Lopez's room has had. I think she told me thirty-five kids in there the past three Mondays, so um, she's doing a great job with that program. And just want to give her a, a quick shout-out.
Thanks, Brian, right?
Yeah, um, I've sat behind the band at the football games for years. And I just have to commend the band and Yashimi, you guys did, you guys are doing a great job. Sound the, the, it's, the songs are great, music is great, the, the spirit of it is great, so.
Can you hear me over the, the entire student section? Can you hear me screaming at the band over the entire student section?
It would be the whole student section, but it was the band, I, I know, because I sit right behind them. Um, and yeah, also, I just wanted to commend every, um, everyone who did work on the threat. Um, I do think being proactive, uh, it, it minimizes the, the possibilities of. Of something like that happening more often and, and as much, so, good job.
Great, thanks, Brian. Um, I don't have much, I could ditto everything that, that you all said. Um, one thing I did want to mention is I, you know, along with the, the issue that we had the last couple of days is. You know, thanking our, our community that they approved the capital levy so that, you know, we can update Housel Middle School. And have that, you know, a secure area, you know, entrance into the school like the rest of them. So um, you know, commend everybody for what they did here these last couple of days, but also thank the community for, you know. Partnering and making sure that, you know, we have the right stuff, um, you know, at our schools. The only other thing I wanted to mention, and yeah, the bands did great, um, I did hear you over the student section. Um, you got them in, in line and in order, so good job. Um, but I, I did, uh, was, I was sent a picture of one of the East Valley football player. Um, and just kind of what a, I guess, a, a, a good young man, he's, he is and, and will be. He, he was picking up garbage on the East Valley side of the, the stadium, so. Um, his name is Braden Albright and it's pictures everywhere, but just want to commend him for, for what he's. Big, exactly what the C-WAC said, a leader on and off the field, so. And with that, that's all I've got, our next uh regular board meeting will be October ninth. Right here at six PM, uh, safety and security the same day in room one thirty at five PM. With that, this meeting is adjourned.